Okay, well, we'll call this meeting to order for the Planning Commission, City of Lathrop Village, for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move on to roll call.
Roll call Chair Potowski.
Here from my home in Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Vice Chair Jason Hammond.
Present, Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Secretary Stansberry.
Present here at Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Commissioner Fobbs.
Present calling from Lathrop Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here, Lathrop Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Commissioner Dillard Russo. Commissioner Hicks. Mr. Chair, you have a forum.
Okay, thank you.
Don't forget, we do need, we did get notice from Commissioner Dillard Russo, so we could get a motion to excuse her, that would be great.
Like a motion to excuse Commissioner Dillard Russo from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Vice Chair Hammond. Secretary Stansberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fobbs.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. So move on to the next item approval of the agenda. Everyone has a chance to review, the agenda is fairly brief this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Secretary Stansberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fobbs.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Potowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Okay. Move on to item five, approval of the meeting minutes for our meeting of November 16th, 2021. If there are no comments, questions, corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve as written.
Make a motion to approve the minute, meeting minutes from November 16th, 2021.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Commissioner Fobbs.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Potowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Secretary Stansberry.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the minutes.
Okay. So we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is public comment. Remind speakers that they would be limited to three minutes. There'll be no interaction with, but this is an opportunity for public to comment on items that are not part of the agenda.
Well, and we just got, just got a chat that it's Terrence, actually Commissioner Hicks, so here he is, so. We'll have. I'm tell stories attending, attending from.
That was at the company's strategies.
Yes, and then I know.
You can unmute yourself.
I don't know why that shows up like that, I have another account to another client, and it shows up like that, so I'm not able to get rid of that, so.
Weird, well, where are you attending from, Terrence?
Actually, I stepped out of a holiday event. So, but it's important because I brought Dunham's to the table, certainly decides the importance of being president of the meeting itself. So I had to step out.
Okay, so for the record, just because we've already gone through roll call, just identify where you're, where you're attending the meeting from.
Oh, I actually, I'm from, I'm calling from the London Chop House in downtown Detroit.
Excellent, excellent. So I know that both Rob, Manton, and Ian Ferguson are here. They're, they're officially our public today, so if they hear anything we want to say now, or we can always get back to it. I know, like I said, they're also have some knowledge on the electric vehicle charging station, so they're attending to be, attending to be part of the conversation.
Okay. So. There are no immediate addressing of the, addressing of the commission from the public. We'll close that and move on to new business. And we'll start off with proposed meeting dates.
Yes, so. This is the proposed meeting dates for 2022, we're still meeting on the third, the third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM. There are no, there's no holiday conflicts with any of your meetings. We will be moving back to in-person, short of some legislation in the next few days from the state. But we are going to, my, my plan right now, and I was hoping to have this figured out for us, but I do not. My plan is to have us in council chambers, and have us set up very similarly to how council has done set up for the last few day, or the last few times with the fighters in between. And we will have the public in the meeting place, and we'll be able to broadcast the meeting into the meeting place. And then staff will sit out in the, where the audience generally is, so I'm just, that's pretty much the most affordable way that we can continue to record and broadcast these meetings moving forward, so. If that is okay with all of you, that's, that's the plan I'm, I'm going to move forward with, but. As it stands, I will need a motion to adopt your meeting schedule for 2022.
Okay, we have a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt the proposed meeting schedule from the agenda packet for Planning Commission meeting dates in 2022.
Second.
Hey, those in favor, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Potowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Secretary Stansberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Fobbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Terrence reviewed it.
Thank you, yes, I'm sorry.
Motion carried to adopt the 2022 meeting schedule.
Hey. Thank you. Move on to second item under new business, presentation for the electric vehicle charging stations.
Terrence, would you like to introduce them?
Yes, I do, so thank you. As I stated in the previous meeting, there's some dialogue that we had about an interest in knowing more about electric charging station, both from a commercial and a residential standpoint, and we got into quite a bit of dialogue about it, and because of a relationship that I have with Dunham's Energy Partners, and I thought it was a good idea for them to actually come to the table and, and make a presentation for us to further understand what the charging stations is all about, including what maybe our interest in a, in a Q and A session also. So I think we have Derek Beeler and Kamathi. Able to present, I don't know if they're able to show content right now.
I can make that happen, hold on, let me. Voila, you may share.
Are you all able to see my screen?
Yes, I can see it.
Fantastic, and I certainly just want to start by thanking you all for the invitation, certainly Terrence and the rest of the commission. We really just feel honored anytime we get a chance to, you know, talk about what we do, and more importantly, the, we think the transformational energy around electrification and mobility, specifically in the electric vehicle charging space. I want to be extremely respectful of your time, I could talk for hours and hours and hours, but I figured I would just spend a few minutes telling you all a little bit about ourself and kind of what we, what we've done. But again, I want to make sure that I put a good time on that and allow for any type of questions or anything. Suzie, Terrence, five minutes.
Heck, you could even have 10 if you wanted.
Wow.
And as I mentioned, certainly feel free either during or after to, to avail myself or Derek with any questions. And again, my name is Kimathi Booth, all of my colleagues call me Key. I'm the Vice President of Energy Operations for Dunham's Clean Energy Partners, along with its wholly owned subsidiary Dunham's Charge. And presenting with me today is Derek Beeler, he's our Program Manager, and certainly a key member of our executive team, so thanks for having my back here, Derek. And really, I just want to spend a few minutes as I, as I mentioned, telling you about us, and really in expounding more on two of our specific product offerings, our electric vehicle charging stations and our wraparound energy management services. And our President and CEO Natalie King, I actually founded the company back in 2012. We started off with just a handful of employees and consultants, and really grew in expertise and knowledge, capacity really, so, such that we averaged some of our business success, and we grew and scaled the company in 2019 to provide additional services for some of our customers. So in 2019, we were actually able to secure a contract to provide some environmental type cleaning services, and that really allowed us to invest in our next innovations. So as of today, Natalie is still our founder and CEO, we're still a minority woman-owned business. We have about $6 million in gross revenue and 155 employees to date. And we're, we're in the plan of a, of a second scaling, such that within the next five years, we'll be growing to what you see there. For me, the most important number out of all of this is the 230 employees. That actually represents 75 new, new job positions. So that's 75 new economically, socially, and environmentally sustainable jobs for those people most impacted by greenhouse gas emissions and poverty. So we just secured a manufacturing facility on the east side of Detroit, and we'll be looking to employ members from the community, not only employ, but train them in that type of advanced manufacturing. And again, we're very proud to do that right here in the city. And that kind of contributes to what we call the Dunham's Difference. And for us, that really all starts with our mission statement, and that's to deliver the most efficient, high-quality, clean energy products and services to customers that result in cost-efficient, equitable solutions that improve corporate operations and provide lifestyles while building a cleaner and safer, sustainable home. And for us, you know, really, we have a commitment to excellence, and that commitment really puts us in a unique position to be right at the intersection of best-in-class products, energy expertise, and community engagement. And that's really how we were founded, that's what has been true through our growth and scaling, and that's the core values that we take really going into our future work. So to get more into our product, within our electric vehicle charging product line, we've actually designed and developed from the ground up, best-in-class Level 2 AC chargers. And the AC chargers are the ones that can charge a vehicle in about four to six hours using a 220 volt or 240 volt outlet. And our units are competitively priced, we're laser-focused on reliability as well as being network and vehicle agnostic. So we've designed our units to work with any charging network and with any of the vehicles out there, including we have an adapter even for Tesla. They, all of our chargers have the safety, the performance, all of the control features that really translate into cost savings, like a 65 to 85% reduction in fuel costs, along with environmental benefits like reduced CO2 and other greenhouse gas emissions. All of our units are also UL certified and will be Energy Star certified for efficiency. And as I mentioned, we'll be, we're excited to really, we're ramping up all hands on deck right now for our start of production, which will, which is scheduled for March of 2022, again, in the city. I won't spend too much time getting into the technical detail until you all have some, some questions, but our units kind of stand apart in that, you know, we've designed them, again, to be installed, operated, and maintained here in the, in the US, which we have some, some, some different characteristics than our Asian and European counterparts. But in particularly, you know, we provide real-time information and monitoring within our unit, so at any point, our owners and operators can tell, first of all, that the, that the unit is actually operating, the status, the various criteria and preventative information that owners and operators really, really seem, really find useful. And not only that, but from a maintenance perspective, we're able to transmit data right to those maintenance operators as well as to the, to those owners. So a lot of full features around communication and automation, really that ensure that the units are optimized so that they charge at the very lowest cost and the most efficient charging possible. We really, I see a hand.
Yes, this is Jason. Hey, Key, thanks for, for this presentation so far, I just had a quick question on the previous slide. Can you talk about be ready for the future, are there existing things you guys are already thinking about or going to be coming down the line that you're preparing for?
Absolutely, there's, there's several, one, one of which that may be most familiar is what we call the B to G technology. So currently, right now, the way charging is set up is really all of that electricity and communication is coming from the charger to the vehicle. What we anticipate, we've actually been in discussions with several of the automotive manufacturers. So we anticipate, as well as with the utility companies, the, the operational ability to communicate information and electricity from the vehicle back to the charging station. And once we do that, then that allows us to really set up all types of distribution and resilience, emergency situations for those municipalities that may have fleets. You know, we can set up protocols such that when there's a severe storm warning coming within so many, you know, hours or days, we can charge all of the vehicles to the maximum charge in anticipation or in preparation of some type of outage. And then that electricity can be transferred back from the vehicles at any particular rate or any type of predetermined criteria, such that it provides, you know, power to the, to the facility.
Yeah. And Key, I don't know if you wanted to mention wireless, if you're talking about future things, there's wireless charging coming also, I don't know if you want to touch on that just a little bit, Key?
Yeah, that's, that's future, future.
That's future, future.
So we are certainly working within that space also. Again, really looking to bring the best and most efficient charging experience to, to our customers. So that, that certainly, without getting too much cut off the bag there, that's certainly something we're, we're interested in, in exploring. But again, I think more immediate future is that vehicle-to-grid integration, and our units are all set up and prepared for that.
Yeah, that's awesome, it's something I hadn't really thought about, is this idea that maybe you're traveling out of town, you're away from home, and then the storm comes through and you can't get your vehicle to a charging station, and if you're, have the information ahead of time to know that a situation like that is going to occur, then you A, have the information you need to know, oh, I got to go get to a charging station now while there is no storm, and B, maybe, you know, the, the, the charging station can actually provide a, either a faster charge or a more complete charge in anticipation of the bad weather that might come through. And then obviously, the wireless thing is just convenience, like, that's great, I don't have to plug anything in, yeah, count me in.
Yeah, and that sounds like a real benefit for a situation, maybe beyond what we would necessarily expect to see in the city, at least at this point, like a fleet, companies that have fleets of vehicles, where, where they want to, and if I understood it correctly, get those vehicles charged as a source of power to potentially, you know, tap for other purposes other than driving the vehicles themselves, if, if that were, you know, a necessary scenario.
Absolutely, you're right on, and even a current, you know, kind of more real-world practical solution. So our units have built-in intelligence such that, so for example, if you're plugging at home, you, you get in at, you know, 4:35 o'clock and you plug your car in, at that particular time of day, electric rates might be 20 cents per kilowatt hour. After nine o'clock, those rates go down to 11 cents. And, you know, most people aren't going to wake up, go back out to the garage, turn it, so our unit is able to delay that charge until the optimum time for, for charging. And we're able to set up intelligence such that it knows you're leaving for work at five o'clock in the morning, so make sure that you're, you know, charged up to 80% by five o'clock in the morning. In the event of a storm, it may say, well, we need to go ahead and charge the vehicle at five o'clock, even though it may cost a little bit more because, you know, there's a high, high chance of outage or something to that effect. So we're able to build in that type of intelligence and decision-making, and really provide that information real-time to the owner-operator through a smartphone app or through your laptop or computer or something to that effect. And, and we really do that through our energy management services. As I mentioned, we're an energy efficiency company at, at our core, so energy management is really where we, we excel and have a decade of experience here. And that's where we really take into account, not only the electric vehicle charger, but customers may have solar or renewable energy. More and more customers who are interested in electric vehicles are also interested in that battery storage component and tying that into, you know, their solar panels that they put on the roof or something like that. And what we excel at is really, as I mentioned, integrating all of those systems so that they work optimally, so that the charger is using more energy from the solar panel than it is from the battery backup than from the electric grid. So we, again, use our engineering services in conjunction with that charger product to really bring a comprehensive solution to our customers. We have a whole team of certified energy managers and professional engineers, project managers that really help lead that effort. And just to kind of briefly take you through that, we generally, of course, start with our customer and what those objectives are. And what we find is, the objective may be to install electric vehicle chargers, but when we do a more comprehensive analysis, we, we may discover that we can save, you know, 40 or 50% in capital costs along with an additional 30 or 40% in addition, in ongoing operation costs, if we do some other measures. So we take a holistic approach, as I mentioned, we gather data, we send a team out to do audits and site assessments, that's, you know, whether it's just a parking lot or an entire facility or an entire campus. As I mentioned, we currently have energy managers at, at one of the large universities here in the city, at Great Lakes Water Authority, at several municipalities around, even in Oakland County. So we're very adept at doing audits, modeling, and site assessments. We'll take that information and build out a toolbox that, again, really speaks to those objectives. So there may be opportunities for energy efficiency, because when you're adding an electric vehicle charger, many people kind of forget, you're, you're, you're actually adding an electric load, you know, you're, you're adding a refrigerator when you, when you charge up that car. So we want to make sure we can offset that any way we can through energy efficiency, ultimately through any type of renewable energy or energy storage systems. We then integrate that electric vehicle charging infrastructure into that model, and finally, we're able to run some simulations and produce a report that really lays out everything I just kind of described there in general. So that's our kind of general service roadmap, how we approach a project. We may come in, as I said, in energy efficiency, or we may come in directly in terms of installing and integrating EV chargers, and we work directly with, with our customers to make sure that happens. Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, hi, Key, just a quick question, with the other municipalities you work with, have they asked, where is the ideal location for your charger, and how could that be incorporated?
They have, and that's something we're actually, we're, 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 we're doing a pilot with, with the city of Rochester Hills around some of that exact effort. So there are some different ways to go about that, we're exploring some, some, some technologies that really taking all those type of different municipal inputs and, and overlays that. and in in overlays that more more specifically, in their case, it overlays it with where their challenges are with mobility. So they're able to, this particular program is able to take in, for example, Uber data. So where where are the Uber hotspots within the community? And that may be a good central location for a charger, for example. Or where's there no Uber, you know, hotspot and residents find it completely challenging to get get a ride? That may be a great spot for not only a charger, but some other, you know, mobility solution that, you know, goes along with that. So a shared car or something to to that effect. So it really opens up, you know, when you talk about electrification, it really opens up the door of solution to 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 really allow you to focus in on on, you know, where the greatest impact is in your community.
Okay, thanks.
I was gonna say, hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
And just to kind of breeze through these last few slides here. As I mentioned, really for us, it's that energy expertise. Derek has over twenty years' experience in the electric utility industry. I think as a team, we probably have about a hundred and fifty years of experience with energy efficiency and energy related integration. And as I mentioned, we went into this process of manufacturing our own chargers because we didn't find anything out in the market that met our, really our requirements for quality and particularly reliability. One of the main issues in the market today is the reliability of chargers. One of the most recent studies, actually, this was a little while ago, non-Tesla chargers generally have about a seventy seventy six percent uptime. And that translates to ninety one days offline. That's that's three months out of the year that, you know, your charger doesn't work. When you multiply that over a network of chargers, you know, ten, a hundred, a thousand chargers, then that's a significant loss of time, you know, revenue, you know, all of those things associated with that. So we were we were fortunate enough to, you know, learn from some of our early competitors, partner with some operation and maintenance companies that, you know, maintain twenty thousand EV chargers and really take some of the lessons from that and focus, as I mentioned, on reliability. Such that right now, our current testing, and we have units out doing third party testing. But our units are designed and manufactured to meet a ninety nine percent uptime. So it translates to about four days, just under four days down per year. And we're we're continuing to to improve that. But again,
What typically causes the downtime? What are some of the causes behind that?
The there are several issues. The major, you know, some of the major issues really are around communication. So when the charger loses that communication link to the network provider or the server, then it may show that it's operating when it's not operating. Or it may show that it's not operating, and in fact, it is operating. So that's one major hurdle. And that can come from a variety of things. We see, you know, failures within the units themselves. So, you know, water or insects or bugs or something like that. Or the antenna itself might fail. Believe it or not, we've 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 seen chargers go in and they've gone in kind of within a construction site. So once the construction was done, it was a big building right next to the charging station and it blocked the cell phone signal. So, you know, those are many of the the considerations that we've tried to build in for. But that's certainly the biggest issue, I think, is around that communication aspect. For for someone who owns a EV, and our our CEO has told this story numerous times. You know, you pull up to a charger with, you know, forty miles of range left. You go to plug it in and it doesn't work. And on your app, it says, wow, this charger is supposed to work. And you see on your app there, well, there's another charger fifteen miles away, but I only have forty miles of range. So that anxiety sets in. Will I have, you know, will that charger work? Will I, you know, will I, will I, will I, will I make it there? So we really, again, tried to hone in on those issues and address that from a hardware standpoint, a software standpoint, and a communications standpoint.
So so elaborating on the communication aspect, I I want to understand that a little bit more because I think this gets gets more into a a system thinking regarding these as opposed to, it's just another fancy outlet that has a delivery source that is, you know, obviously got to be robust enough that it's going to take any public abuse it might see. Or so when you talk about communication and it's communication of an individual being able to find a charging outlet near me and then it being operational. Are you also suggesting that the power is maybe in a concept not there at the device until the device communicates that it needs the power somehow?
Is there, yeah, there 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 are some internal, you know, that that's more of an internal aspect. So we have, I don't want to get too technical. I'm I'm an engineer by train by training, so it's hard for me not to get too technical sometimes. But we do have, there's there's built in safety features such that, for example, until or and unless that connector is properly charged, plugged into the vehicle, that communication between the charger and the vehicle will send the signal saying, okay, now you can, you know, release thirty two amps of current into this vehicle.
Yeah, so it's not a mechanical switch turning on the power. It's a it's more complicated than that. It's a it's a communication switch. And I'm not sure where that communication goes to or how that's managed or. But that's a that's that's certainly more than just just somebody saying, okay, I can upsize my panel provided, you know, the in the in the or the service that I have to my facility and and support, you know, three or four spaces.
I think even what even more than that, you the 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 charging station itself needs to communicate wirelessly to the internet, to a centralized service that can then send information to an app on a mobile phone telling you, is this charging station live or is it not live? And if that communication is malfunctioning for some reason, then as Key was saying, you might pull up to a charging station that's reported as active when it's not. Or you may not get given the opportunity or a suggestion to go to a station that is active because its reporting is inactive. And that's just wireless communication. That's not talking about the delivery of energy to the charging station.
When you think about the transition of people coming from fueling their vehicles to charging their vehicles, and you recognize that what you're talking about is systems that are not controlled necessarily by people on site. In other words, you don't have somebody to go and troubleshoot at the location necessarily. Now, you might, if somebody sets up a facility like a traditional gas station and they have the ability to create the ports to, you know, to or the charging stations to. And then they've they've got a technician on on site. But but this goes beyond that and 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 it sounds like it's looking at more of a maybe a data center somewhere that's monitoring, you know, in a much broader pattern of of devices that are established, you know, you know, throughout, you know, a region or a locale if it's handled in that manner.
You're you're both right. So there are certain internal, you know, communications within the unit. You're right, where we we check to make sure current is right. It's really all about safety. We want somebody to, we want the one to be idiot proof. Want somebody to be able to come in, plug the thing in, and it's no way it can not work or, you know, cause some some type of damage. So this is that internal type of communication. But just as Jason mentioned, there's really external communication pathways also. So our units have built in Wi-Fi and 4G as kind of, you know, backup and redundancy with respect to that. And that communication happens in different ways, too. So there's a communication aspect that happens between the the charger and the end user. So that person driving the electric vehicle. Now, that may happen through a charging network. So there are various charging networks out there like Green Lots or ChargePoint where that charger is connected to many other chargers. And and so there's a communication aspect to the customer. There's also communication, just to your point, that our unit collects data. We have a cloud based server that where we maintain, store and collect that data. And then we're able to provide whatever data in whatever form either to the to the end user, either to the the owner operator or to the actual maintenance and service person. So currently, the situation generally is that, and again, we have a very strong partner in the maintenance and operation space. And generally, what happens is, you know, a unit goes down and, you know, somebody has to generally actively report that unit goes down. They'll they'll report that to their network provider or if they actually own that that charger, they'll call up a an electrician or a service person to come out. That person to come out, they'll say, okay, the code is blinking three times red and two times green. And they'll call to their network provider and they'll say, okay, well, that means the XYZ panel needs to be changed out. The technician will say, okay, send me an XYZ panel. They'll send an XYZ panel, you know, overnight. The technician has to come back, then they'll reinstall the XYZ panel. They'll call up the network provider and say, okay, I reinstalled the the XYZ panel. Can you send a test? Da da da. Okay, now it's blinking three times. Good. All right, I'm good. That's the current process. So what we've designed again and built our units in a couple of ways. For one, we have a LED display screen. So we have a lot more direct communication with the end user as well as any operators there. And then as as to Mark's point, we're able to, the data that we collect, whether that's on the unit itself, whether that's weather conditions, whether that's any type of vehicle telematics, any of that data we collect, we we have access to and we can provide that, for example, directly to the the owner operator and that maintenance provider. So soon as we get a signal saying, oh, the the normal connection that makes that XYZ panel happen, that's no longer working. We'll 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 get, we'll receive an alert. We'll be able to pass that information right on to that owner operator and or directly to the maintenance person. They'll go out there knowing that it's the XYZ panel. They'll be able to go out directly on the unit, review the status of that, change that out. We'll know as they're doing it in real time that, hey, they just took the cover panel off. Hey, they just, you know, unscrewed the XYZ panel. So we'll have all of that real time data that, again, we can provide to whatever level to to our owner operators. And that, again, is really what contributes to that, you know, ninety nine percent uptime. And again, to Mark's point, that that solution for us came out of our holistic view of energy management and how that, you know, how that affects, you know, customers when you integrate those type of energy related technologies. That was my long answer in all of that good stuff. Great questions. These are, just to touch on a couple of things. Again, our units are, so we we have configured in seven point two, all the way up to nineteen point two KW in single and dual configurations, residential, public and commercial. So all of those have, you know, somewhat different setups. What the residential person wants to do and and see on the app is a little bit different than what you all may want to do as a municipality. It is open, as I mentioned, so it can work with any existing network and we network with other chargers. But we do offer a proprietary software that rides on top of that that gives that robust, real time monitoring and and control. We, again, use all of all of our energy management experience and knowledge to really set up, you know, charging so that we can optimize that for time of day or cost or any any criteria that that you all may may seem relevant. And we can integrate that into your your existing and future systems. And we're certainly proud that it's manufactured and assembled here in Michigan. As I mentioned, we do have several case studies, Great Lakes Water Authority, Wayne State, Rochester and Lear. So we're excited to get some of the feedback from there. We we expect our first installations to happen probably midsummer and are just really, really, really excited on these, again, large scale integration projects. So they're integrating some some solar and battery storage and the like and see how it actually all works. So we're again, very, very excited about that. You know, just in the to 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 date, we've saved about thirteen thousand metric tons in CO2. With the release of our and deployment of our electric vehicle charging products, we expect to increase that by more than seven times. So we anticipate that, again, increasing to about three hundred and sixty metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions displaced and abated due to use of of our charger. So our environmental impact is very important to us. That's part of our our whole company infrastructure. And we move through that as a continuous improvement type process. Similarly, as I mentioned, with our community impact, very involved with youth and workforce development, job creation and training and the like. So again, we we work very closely with with those communities that we that we serve. And this is for us, sustainability and equity is really tied together and 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 just drives us. You know, when when we're not sure, when things get all complicated, we make sure that we're centered on these things and we think we're we'll be in a good place. Here's our our team. As I mentioned, we just closed on a facility off of right next to the old Packard plant. And we're right down the street from the new GM Factory Zero. So we're we're excited to get in. This is kind of our executive team here. Very, very proud to be working with this group of people. And we're just just, they're all excited as I. One thing I will mention that I I see on here, as, you know, with our energy management experience, we have a ton of resources and expertise with respect to procuring incentives related to energy projects. So we're able to, we have a whole team that we can throw at all of the EV charger incentives from federal, state, you know, even utility and 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 beyond. So we do pride ourselves in being able to add that as a as a service as well. And, you know, I just thought, you know, just as some possible next next steps or thought starters, you know, any further conversations, we're open to any type of question and answers or requests for information, any type of solicitations, we we certainly would not only like to receive, but we're willing to assist in any any type of consulting role in in developing out any of that work or language. And again, just want to thank you for the opportunity to 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 share with you.
That's awesome. Thanks, Key.
Yeah, that was fantastic. Thank you. Way more information than I could possibly imagine getting on a Tuesday night. So that was that was really cool. Thank you.
Yeah, very important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Key, Kay and and Derek. And um I would like to just offer up the the additional questions. Uh, um, we can float that through me, and then I can get in contact with the principals at Dudenham uh to get a direct answer.
And just thinking about um, you know, what you what you all have discussed over the last couple of planning commission meetings. Uh, just wondering how um how, what you've heard tonight? Um, you know, how that helps helps you move forward with um with the development of an EV ordinance? I mean, we're, are we?
I
Give me some direction, please.
I I feel like um that the the question around like the maintenance reliability and availability of the chargers. I I'd have to go back and take a look at the draft ordinance language that was presented to us in the last meeting, but I feel like maybe there wasn't enough focus on that, and that's going to be
Right.
Not just the uh the safety of the equipment and how it's maintained and um, you know, being uh ru- running electrical lines to make sure that uh, you know, we're uh, you know, parking lots or other areas where these things might sit are prepared for charging stations to be installed in them in the future. But also, like, the the ordinance should take into account the reliability of the charging stations, because if there's a charging station there, but it's not working or it's unreliably working, it only works every third day or something like that, that's uh, that's not good, right? And so we need to be keeping that in mind as we uh are starting to craft our ordinance as well.
Yeah, I don't I don't think, we didn't have anything about reliability in the draft ordinance, did we?
I
Go back and read it, but.
I've been going, I've been trying to like read through it and listen at the same time, and I'm I've been focused more on listening, but um I, as I scroll through it, um, the only thing it says about maintenance um is that uh electric vehicle charging stations shall be maintained in all respects, including the functioning of the equipment. A phone number or other contact information shall be provided on the equipment for reporting when it is not functioning or other problems are encountered. And so that's all I'm seeing in this quick scroll through.
Yeah, so one thing I think that we have with uh other type, like with building materials, for example, is um actual measurements based on industry standards of the reliability, the fire retardancy, like the, you know, the uh the strength, like all that kind of stuff of the building materials. This isn't the building material, but I think still, like, it's important to take into account is, you know, i- i- if if we're allowing somebody to install an EV charging station and they're gonna charge back, you know, the the consumers, the users of that charging station, uh, but they decide to buy a cheaper unreliable charging station just because it fits their budget, you know, maybe that isn't what we're actually trying to incentivize, right? So uh we have to be careful because we can't legislate or you can't add in the ordinance, like you can only buy charging stations from this manufacturer. And there isn't an industry standard today that says, you know, these charging stations meet this level of reliability, and it's an industry accepted standard for that. Um, there's no good answer to it, but we have to figure out some way that we can include reliability, not just maintainability um in what we recommend or what we allow for businesses to to actually implement.
Yes, Ian.
Yeah, just an observation. So uh I didn't get a chance to ask Key this, but um there is a certain quality rating that that is affiliated with their product or other products, other manufacturers' products. So if you guys need to try to incorporate that into any kind of ordinance or or uh standard, then maybe you should point to that uh standard that that the equipment would have to meet uh in order to be rated a certain uh criteria, right? So um instead of just going out and getting a charger, not knowing what the rating is or the quality uh efficiency of it is, then you you're just kind of shooting in the dark, basically. So you need to start from a point of which is a good charger, which is rated highly, which is JD Power and Associates Gold Standard, that kind of thing, right? So and you can get all that information through any uh automotive sector or automotive uh release, or even from the company itself. I'm sure um Key would probably uh know what his quality or his PPM rating is or whatever, that kind of thing.
If I might just just add to that, uh, both of those are excellent points. Um, really, the big take out of that is, right now, there is no standard. And I think, you know, the, for us, uh, the most reliable indicator of performance is going to be that uptime. And just about every manufacturer calculates that uptime differently. So we've kind of taken the most conservative approach with respect to that uh and how we calculate our uptime. We are a part of a coalition that is looking to uh get legislation that really sets that standard. Um, some of the other municipalities and organizations we work with, they're kind of settling in at a, you know, ninety-five, ninety-seven percent uh uptime because that's uh that that that's been kind of stretching the 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 limit of kind of what's out there. And that usually happens with uh very robust service level agreements uh so far. So we're trying to tackle that with a better hardware that requires, you know, less of a service level agreement. But in evaluating different chargers, I would look at the uptime, realizing that uh you also would need to understand how they calculated that uptime to really be able to compare apples to apples. Great, great uh points there. And and if I just might add one one other thing, uh, that becomes really important and an obstacle often is with respect to the installation. Um, so um, you know, running a a two-twenty dryer line, you know, is one set of permit, but because it has EV charger at the end now, it's like, oh, it's, you know, and um so uh those would just be, you know, uh, two, two very important points that I would uh uh like to like to leave you with, yeah.
It's a really good point, because I, we actually had a conversation with Rob Mantina, who's a resident and is not part of the commission, but is on the call here tonight about that just the other night about like, or actually, maybe it was a Facebook post I saw that he he made. But it thought he talked about like, if you're hiring an electrician to run a two-twenty line for any reason, if you don't tell them what the reason is, right? They might charge you a different rate versus if you tell them it's for an EV charging service, even if the actual work is exactly the same, right? So that's something to keep in mind.
Good observation. Thanks.
Mark, you are muted if you're talking to us.
Yeah, I I just lost my internet for about the last fifteen minutes.
Right after we were talking about It was all the great stuff.
Talking about communications and first time I've lost, I've dropped out, had lost internet service in a Zoom meeting since COVID started. So, um, anyway. I'm back.
Wonderful.
You can hear the recording.
Yeah, I guess so. All right, hopefully I didn't miss too much.
Oh, we just signed you up for like eighteen committees. It's fine. Did anyone else have any question, any additional questions for Key and Derek? All right, well, thank you both so, so very much. This was extremely helpful. I'm sure that you will hear back from me and at least one more time, probably more, so um, yeah, we really appreciate you guys being here tonight and and teaching us some things.
Yes, very informative.
Thank you.
For the information and your your invitation and the time, and again, uh, we're available to to assist in any way we can.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Have a good night. Great holiday.
Thank you.
Everyone. Thank you. Okay, we'll uh move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be any old business table items.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. I'm gonna log off. Great productive meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Take care.
We don't have anything under old business or tabled items currently. Um, other matters for discussion? Anything uh on the minds of the commission? Projects that are underway?
Well, I guess I could I could give one update, since, you know, we were involved with the um uh zoning ordinance for cannabis. Uh, council council did vote on Monday um to delay the application process indefinitely. Um, because we're down a city manager, and the city manager plays an integral part in the processing of the applications. I mean, we're not only down the city manager, we're down a clerk, we're down a recreation coordinator, we're down a a deputy treasurer. So um our our resources are stretched really thin, and and this process is going to be a massive um undertaking resource-wise. So council um uh voted to delay the or to rescind the uh resolution that that had the um starting date for the application in in January, and so it's open-ended at this point. So um uh more more likely to be, once we get a city administrator and have that city minister in place. But then we also talked about um putting the actual ordinance uh on on the ballot. Um, so that's something that that may happen. We'll 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 be beginning discussions of that in 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 January as well. So um, so just wanted to update everybody since you, since this group was was involved and in helping set the ordinances for for that uh um that topic, so.
With Bruce, with the, if if it goes to the ballot, um, would that include both the zoning ordinances as well as the city ordinances?
I don't know enough about it yet. I mean, we 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 just kind of scratched the surface. I mean, for Scott's um, Scott's, i- i- at least in the the brief discussion we had last night, you know, it would be a uh basically voting to opt out or or not. So if if it was a pro vote, then everything would stay in place and we would, you know, start the application process. And if it was a um uh vote against, then then we would, you know, essentially be opting out. So I I I'm not a hundred percent certain what would happen with the with the ordinances. Um, again, that's that's, those are matters that we have to discuss in the in in the study session starting in in January.
The reason I bring it up is because I feel like, even if the city opts out.
Right.
That doesn't necessarily mean that we don't, we or that we shouldn't have language for how do we control all those businesses, how that, you know, all the stuff that we talked about around order con- order control, the look, the security, the, you know, all those sorts of things, maybe could still remain in our zoning ordinances so that if at some point in the future, they decide, the city decides to actually if uh adopt or implement or allow for cannabis businesses in the city, they're not starting from square one.
Right, or if there's a hostile ordinance, you know, somebody comes in with a pro pro ordinance and and it gets, you know, adopted by the the residents, then the zoning ordinance is already in effect. But again, that may supersede our zoning ordinance, but I, yeah. So again, these these are all things that we we know we have to figure out. Um, but, you know, again, we'll we'll begin talking about those in in early January.
So Bruce, this this status, this, your reference to it potentially going on to the ballot, what what was the impetus for that?
Well, the the, I I think the, that was the direction of 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 council, but the 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 concern, the the, you know, I I brought this up on 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 Monday night, and the the concern was, you know, realistically, you're you're talking with the with the, you know, with with repealing the the resolution that starts the application process, you know, realistically, you're talking probably six to nine months before, you know, we'd be able to flick the switch back on again. Um, and we do did know that, you know, there there has definitely been some mutterings of of getting this on the ballot. And the problem, the the concern that I had was that, okay, we've got the six to nine month delay. Now we get a city administrator and, you know, that person is up to speed and we're ready to flick the switch. And then, you know, it comes out in city council that, okay, well, now we want to put this on the, you know, on the ballot. And I I think there would be support for that, probably even unanimous support for that. But the problem is now, if if that happens at at nine months from now, we can't get on the November ballot. It's too late. And so we then lose another year or or implement a very costly special election, um, which, you know, we obviously don't want to do.
I do. Yeah.
Um, so, you know, potentially, you we could lose up to two, almost two years. And so I I felt it made sense to bring it up now and and get that process started now so that if it's eventually going to happen, no matter what, we might as well get, make sure that it happens this November.
So you can make the decision with the best control.
Right, and and, you know, part of the, part of the problem, um, you know, why I think you you know, we we can't afford to let this go for two years because our business corridor, I mean, there's all sorts of speculation going on right now. Uh, lease rates, rental rates are are, from what I've been told, are are rising dramatically. Um, and then also, you know, from discussions with Suzie, a lot of the, I think she even said most, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh most of the um uh buildings that are in the green zone have conditional contracts with cannabis vendors should they get a license. So nothing is, you know, while this delay is is taking place, absolutely nothing is going to be happening economically, developmentally, if that's a phrase.
Yeah, because it's because of the uncertainty.
Right, and so we we can't afford to have two years of uncertainty like this. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, this is moving along, and if it's going to go that route, then it goes this route, we get this done with, and, you know, yea or nay, one way or the other, and we move forward.
Right, even if it goes to a no, a vote, and then the residents don't know, then you just know.
Right.
I mean, we know the city, now the building owners and, you know, can start looking at other businesses to be tenants in their buildings.
Right, right. And it wasn't that the last council didn't want to go the vote route. The problem was when it was brought to us, they're ju- they're just, you know, we we as council were moving, you know, representative government, putting an ordinance in place. And, you know, the residents told us they wanted to um, you know, vote on it, and and they had a significant number of of signatures on that petition. But it was, I if I remember correctly, I think it was three days before the the deadline for for getting something on the on the ballot, and it takes us as a council, you know, a few weeks to do that process. So there was no way, no way to do that at that time, so.
Yep, yep, okay. Interesting times in the city, once again.
Yeah.
Right. Any general communications? This end of year.
I know. Nothing, no- nothing that we don't already, that we haven't already talked about or hasn't been touched on. Um, just have a very happy holiday and safe new year, and stay tuned for how we are going to meet in the new year.
Okay.
Really appreciate everything that you do for us, really, and you work your tail off, trying to get the agendas together, engaging with different people, and you be part of these meetings. It's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you for supporting.
Very, very much so.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for raising.
My pleasure. I like doing it for you guys, so.
Yeah, we're nice people.
I'd say most of you guys are pretty awesome.
Eric, same thing for Giffords. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. I look forward to
Pass it along to uh Jill as well.
Well, I will. Thank you.
And then support staff behind you. Okay.
During this meeting.
Just kind of request that. All in favor? I think that's all of us.
Indeed.
Everyone have a great holiday season. Stay safe. Have fun.
Likewise.
Thank you, Suzie.
All right, see you, bye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.